Good evening, we will let all our town members September fourteenth twenty twenty one town council meeting. Order at six P M. Thank you councilor, please present. We will begin with our next presentation.
Bye. I'm the United States, I'm here. For these states, for my nation, on the ground, invisible, liberty and justice for all.
If you're joining for brief communication, bother to open speak. Brief your guidance as we make decisions on behalf of our town, you need to give us guidance. We also want to make sure that always you're for all of our first responders and all of those who keep us safe here in broad daylight. All year, amen. Next up is our open forum of the comments. Mister Stephen Withers, seven one two Main Street, that signed up to speak this evening.
Yeah, I agree on the general caution. Count of interest. Look at your packet out. Originally had bronze for those portals and hollies. And then bronze by this manufacturer is a bit gray. The architects quickly produced a venting top of the package there. And suggested blue might be your best and will match the color. And will be an acceptable thing. We really wanted you to show up on the site and surprise us. The consulting design team, I and John all thought blue was like, oh. So representing to line for information. Uh, and if you feedback any data, we know we can get it on the council board. Should probably order this next week, so it won't be in time for next conference. So, uh, so just take a look at that and give us your feedback or promotion. Certainly, this is what I would do.
So Stephen, just so I'm clear, you, so the first image we have is the, the blue.
Yeah.
The second one, the gray, which is.
Supposedly bronze.
It's supposed to be bronze, right? But it actually looks great. Is that what you're saying?
It looks much be great. You see a sample of the paint.
I do.
And it's uh, that white is a little funky, but it's still, it looks great. This manufacturer would make a more blonde color, it's a lot more contrasting color.
And this is the only main manufacturer that we have available?
Oh, there's, but uh, this is, you know, the ice cream. This is basically normal. But I think they like the wood better than they first showed in the box. They recommend me much for this.
Council, I'm certainly hold for your input here because I don't, it's not my strong suit.
Well, I'm gonna trust the times.
Well, I do trust the design team, uh, but I do, I know that originally we made. And then with the, I think a little bit with the trains and all of it. You know, again, it's. You guys give us a quick and give the teams that. That, I don't believe you're really good at this. Anything but red. I'm fine with it. Terrible. Either one. I would prefer something more rustic, you know, like a, like a bronze, bronze that they had.
But this color actually was all, was a shame.
It is no.
Okay. Blank. But garden.
And the remainder of the building is white, white on white turn?
White on white with silver.
Yeah, okay. I like. I think it's a little bit scarred with that. Has changed with all the white. Chris?
We want to influence by the problem. Uh. When I saw it, I, I guess they could sense. You know, mine. Soft area, they get lots in here. They thought about the.
Yeah.
The electric. Just with the white on white, but I, you know, looking at the swatch there, it's a little bit. Paper, you know, get a little bit softer than what it is. Showing up here, it gets worse based in the area of how difficult this is.
Well, uh, this automotive tanks is very durable. They are still gotten us. Actually, the availability and warranties and all the pieces part of the product. And so I have to see more and start to fade. A little fade different. So we know that we can read anything that touches off of the maintain. I'm just not sure what the warranty we can do.
Yeah. How about some input from first class down there? What do you guys think? Councilperson D, how do you, councilperson D?
Of the two, I prefer the blue. Okay, you know, the white, the silver. I think that's a better color.
Sound colors.
Yes.
I mean, I expect.
You're okay, alright. I, I mean, must there's some massive objection elsewhere. Go with the design team and trust you guys on this as we, as we tend to do. Looks great so far. Keep up the good work. We appreciate you guys staying on it so hard. Very, yeah, very sharp. Thank you all. Like, I can show you when we painted our house recently and I had to take a whole hall and put up. Color samples before we can decide, so I'm like the last guy you want on this mission. Alright, next up is our special presentations, proclamations and word. And our school resource officer, Officer Carlos Hernandez, uh, is here to recognize your five years of service. Chief officer, one percent chief.
Thank you mayor. And now welcome everybody to our residence, our mayor, town council members, appreciate you being here. Today, we'd be honored to recognize Officer Carlos Hernandez, who's our school resource officer. That he's been, he's been at Wood Maryland Elementary for the last two years, like I talked today. Um, has been with Winnebago Police Department for five years. Remember Carlos comes with a lot of experience from a couple of different agencies. He's been an excellent candidate when he hired him several years ago. And he's been very instrumental in our road nears police department. I know he has some future plans, succession plans for supervising positions in the future. As those come around, but I know that the school loves him over there, does a great job. And he stays on top of all the relevant S R O and active shooter trainings and everything else. So we're very blessed and very fortunate to have him, have him. So Carlos, we can honor him. So today, in recognition of your five years of dedicated and honorable service to the citizens of the town of Winnebago. That's such a important thing in the Winnebago Police Department. We're going to give you this for five years long duty service. Congratulations, and it's an honor to have you here. Smile. Everybody has. Carlos is mostly dark.
Another school resource officer, uh, just recently played a very pivotal part in Lee County breaking up. Online like president. Certainly, we appreciate all your support. Next up is Mister Will Hockler, represent C F X twenty forty five master.
Okay. Good evening, mayor, councilmembers, very happy to be here tonight. Said my name is Will Hockler. I served as the director of engineering at the Central Florida Expressway Authority, uh, C F X. We are here tonight to solicit input from you, your staff, family members, friends. For what we need and what we should in our twenty forty five master. We're, we're in the midst of that updating right now. The last one is done in twenty fourteen timeframe. So without further ado, I'm gonna get started. Um, the Central Expressway Authority, or C F X, or locally known. Was created in two thousand and fourteen. And the biggest changes that occurred at that time. Uh, was an expansion of our jurisdiction. It took us outside of Orange County to Osceola, Seminole, Orange, Lake. And then more recently, Bar. The other change came with the opportunity for us to look at multi-motor transportation opportunities. Chances. So those are the two biggest changes that occurred in two thousand and fourteen. Big slide please. We are governed by a ten-member board, G C here, uh, that includes mayor Orlando, the Orange County mayor. Representatives from each of the counties in our jurisdictions, and then three gubernatorial appointees. Slide. Our system today, I'm sure most of you are familiar with it, comprises almost hundred and twenty-five miles of expressway. Primarily located in Orange County, we do have a little bit in Lake County that was done as part of Oakada Parkway. And also, the most recent addition to our system is at the very bottom of the slide, which is Point Santa Parkway, or also known as five thirty eight. That came with the, we pretty much absorbed the Osceola County Expressway a few years back. And that was their only asset that we could. Next slide. So I'm sure you're all familiar with the old spore that we had in our area. Uh, with nearly three million residents in the greater Orlando area and another seventy-five million visitors each year. Uh, pre-COVID. Doing a master plan now is very important. In fact, the Orlando Economic Partnership estimates that we're still getting around fifteen hundred residents each week to our area. So planning for our transportation needs now is as important as it's ever been. So what is the twenty five, twenty four, twenty forty five master? That, that really sets the course of where we go as an agency and what we look at. Uh, with regards to transportation needs. The way it's built is by the input from folks like yourself. We'll have a brief survey link that you can click on that will be inputted and activated. Um, but really, this is, this is a needs-based plan. This is not a financially useful plan. Then tell everyone that speaking to this is kind of a transportation wish list. So when you take the survey, keep that in mind. And then the other thing to keep in mind, you have two subcomponents of this. The first one is our fully funded five-year work plan that's updated every year. Approved by our board. It is fully funded. Uh, and kind of the, the bridge between the two is our fifteen-year capital improvement plan, which basically is a layout of cash flow. To make sure that start project, we can see it through. So back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen timeframe. Uh, we went far in the air, as far west as the city of NASCAR. As far east is the Space Coast Transportation Planing Organization seeking input. Uh, while we're following the listening tour. Rather begin to, again, develop our twenty forty five master plan. So. Want to talk about the previous plan of the one we're working under now, which is for the year twenty fourteen. That identified eleven billion dollars in transportation needs across four counties. But that was Lake, Orange, Osceola, and Seminole. The bar was not added to our jurisdiction in two thousand and seventeen after this plan was done. Out of that eleven billion, we will have invested two and a half billion by twenty twenty five, right here in Orange County, Lake County, and so on. So some of the signature projects that we've accomplished as part of that master plan, what you're looking at is the four oh eight and four seventeen interchange. This has been going under a lot of updates lately, but it's been done for, I think, two years now. The, the original interchange was opened in nineteen ninety eight, or nineteen eighty eight timeframe. The area has changed drastically since that timeframe, so we have nice operational safety improvements, which we're looking at there. With the fully completed interchange. Thanks. You wouldn't know it, but this is the interchange, meaning more of O I N for N C O. It's, this is taken in the February. This year, it has changed completely since this photo was taken. Project that was posted and completed. February twenty twenty three, they'll be done by next summer. They have, uh, have been able to take advantage of COVID, slow down the traffic, expedite the project, renew. As I said, one of our other big changes as part of our state charter. Came with the opportunity to look at multi-motor partnerships. The first one of this kind was done with Brightline. I'm sure all of you heard about this, something shape or form. And what we did is we partnered with them to co-locate in our right way that goes along five twenty eight. From the airport out to pretty much Coco Beach. And then that allowed them to either like West Palm Beach up to Orlando. Haven't been on five twenty eight lately, five twenty, or the beach line. I encourage you to do so. Uh, it's really neat to see train coming out of the ground and will be laying track as early. This year, so it's very exciting for me. Some of the major initiatives I want to highlight is part of the plan we're under now. The, the addition of sixteen center line mile, or sixteen mile of expressway. Those projects are the Papa Parkway and Point Santa Parkway, which you see at the bottom of the screen in Osceola County. And then we're in the process of adding capacity, or adding lanes to four seventeen. Highlighted here pretty much from I Drive at five twenty eight, south of Orange County. And then, you're on from New York forty nine, we're adding capacity there. Being that, uh, as we speak, huge endeavor to do that, but we'll be adding, uh, additional interuse and direction from pretty much Golden Road all the way to Fort Worth. A little hard to see here, but whenever you look at a new corridor or a new road. Uh, you, there's multiple steps that have to be done before you can drop the building. It's, you know, which way comes to the first one. First step is a concept feasibility ability study. What you're looking at is a combination of all the study areas that are actually complete. That is the first step. The next step, it's a primary development environment study. These are areas that we have wrapped up to, um, underway, one's nearing completion. So one of the highlights on the Lake Orange connector, far left side of the screen, that will be a connection. Goes twenty seven, forty nine, still a real road. And then Point Santa Parkway, which is, is moving north to the left, which ultimately we're trying to get to I four. So everything highlighted. And we'll try to see if you can see one, two, or shapes there that are highlighted. Those are all fully funded for design. And the two on the left, the Lake Orange Expressway and the Point Santa Parkway, Point Santa Parkway extension are fully funded for construction. We have those under design as we speak. Looking to get started on this about. So again, we're here to get your input, questions, the survey link right there, it's C F X way dot com forward slash master dash plan. Or to encourage the audience to take note of this or take the agenda minutes when it's posted. The surveys for, this is the only way, this, you gotta get the ideas in the master plan now, and that's what sets. Course of getting things studied and possibly into a new folder. So, questions, it's very brief survey, questions you can expect to see your multi-motor opportunities. What in your, your view, what kind of transportation needs are needed for management congestion? Even what kind of sustainability is to investigate? We have several both of those areas sold down. On the system now. With that, so doing that, if there's other ideas, we're all ears. That's really what this is all about. That concludes my presentation. If you'd be happy to answer any questions you can have. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you taking the time, councilor, and let us know about the survey. Encourage everyone else to take that. I've got questions, questions in terms of, uh, ring lanes for the four twenty nine to I four transition to the south. Stacks up terribly every day.
Four twenty nine near I four, you said?
So four twenty nine is transition to I four towards Tampa.
Oh, right.
That is a nightmare.
So that is confusing, but that's actually a turnpike section. So we have our section, which are pretty much limited in Orange County. Twenty fourteen, that'll change from start looking, I think, on sidewalk. That section, side L, um, I feel was managed by the company. And I will tell you, they're doing a P E D study to, I think, not only know their surface road, but. Expand that down to what we're doing. Our, we're working together as closely as we can. And I'm aware of that issue. I drive through it every once in a while.
Be dangerous down there.
Yes, it's.
The other hot topic I think you're gonna find here, it's the, and you're well aware, the explosive road to the south and southwest. There's almost no way for those to travel north without, uh, either going to town, taking one of the other limited options. And the numbers of folks that are living there, size of capacity of our roads that were already taxed are now way overtaxed. That have made, I know that's not probably truly a C F X issue, but it is an issue. So they need work that we can do together at the metro level to absolutely facilitate that.
Absolutely. We, we actually do have. Just finished up designing, we're on Star Building, additional lanes for seven four fourteen. But we also have projects in our five-year work plan. Take that all the way down to Skokie. To capture all of what's happening in the horizon, but I suppose it is. It's important. Yeah, so it is something that's on the radar and. I'm, I'm starting to find on that. Rather quickly, I can say, when it comes to designing projects, so I appreciate you.
Council, any further input for our, our partners, actually, if you have a question, if you've ever explored seven to five point eight out to the west. Potentially, I think that we're going to be some of that.
I'm, I'm sure.
He, he's lying west.
It's west is where it goes today.
Right, so west is like, we're typing potentially.
I, I think it's been looked at at a very high level. The challenge is that you can't release that. I would say. I know that E O T is, they're working on their I four beyond the ultimate. They are spanning on work, adding capacity in express lanes down past five thirty five, so. That should start to alleviate some of the pressure that the system is feeling in that area. We can look at it. I mean, that's kind of it, what we need, if it's something we want to look at, certainly.
To the mayor's point, there's, there's a ton of roads in southern town. You know, that will be, will be the difficult road. But that will lead you to some of that, that traffic coming from town.
That, we can definitely look at that. I think, again, make sure your staff or you can plug that in, survey. Definitely get it. Thanks.
Council, you're. Great, and you know, hey, and at the, at the risk of killing the messenger here, maybe I wanna do that. Part of the, the real issue is the systemic way in which we develop. Well, first, we're worried about roads, ten years down through, we're worried about schools, five years down. This is the issue that we really truly need to tackle. I'm sure I'm not the only, only elected official that speaks that, that, you know. And if that's not your issue, that, that is put upon everyone, uh, because you need to start thinking that, there. Continue to face big challenges. Thank you for coming and receiving input for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Rotary Club of Winnebago, recommendation of project manager for the Winnebago year, William. I will leave Mister Byron Sutton to, and his, after Byron.
Yeah. Good evening, Byron Sutton, five oh five, with Second Avenue, Mayor. I am here to submit a request for approval for our owner's representative for the B A project. Let me, uh, first break throughout one item, and the Rotary Club is hiring one position only, owner correct. I am the project manager for the Rotary Club, construction company will have their project manager. The town will decide who they, who their contact, which will be on the project. The ownership will be the Liz on the Rotary, construction company, the town responsible for managing the construction, your firm, jobs and invoices. The job description is included in your package. We benefited this position in the West Orange Times, will go online and rent for fifteen days, had no response. We solicited an interview by candidates via the recommendations, concerns, considerable position. One went through, uh, the committee, by the way, consisted of George Holder, Frank Grantz, Chuck Marcus, myself, and Norman. And with Norman preparing the notes and documents. We included in your package the process, we followed the advertisement, the list of candidates. Questions, considerations for the interviews, differences, evaluations. Our selection criteria include qualifications, experience with government and nonprofits, size, location, price. Focus on the community and the references. But you can add us, they swipe the C H A as our choice, simply ask your approval before we move on with this. Uh, right. Any questions?
Yes, Byron, thanks, sir. I do have some questions in terms of. trolling here to try to find it, but the, the scope of work. Is the scope of work that you're referring to be part of the hiring process where it talks about. Considerations.
Mayor's so fine, so fine dude.
Oh, isn't that what you're talking about?
Just, just so we know, I'll write the joke.
Is that, is that the scope?
Yes.
I ask because I, I have a couple of concerns. The, you're one, the scope is very general. And. Not only is the scope general, but the. The qualifiers that go along with that, the identity process and the. Uh, who we need in the process and all of that, I mean, sort of. I don't know if it's robust enough if we have to defend it. I don't want us to treat this as a. As a small project, because it's really, I explained about a project on town property. So I just want to make sure that we don't leave ourselves liable or overconfident if any further issues come through. Those skills, that was one of the things that I wanted to ask you. Those skills, that was one of the things that I wanted to ask you, if some specific or not.
Well, this, once we pick the, the company, then our next goal is to sit down with them and really work out exactly how we're going to proceed on of this point, is better identify, qualify, permitting someone to help, comfortable with the process. As we move forward, we've been involved, I've been involved with, we've been involved with the, this, this group to develop our, our strategy for our big construction company and playing out the entire plans, exactly how we proceed, providing, with the construction company, with the architect company, to take it to the final plan. So it's not, some of that is fluid, it's, it's, I think, feel comfortable. After our evaluation of C H A, they have the ability, they have the experience to, to work with in every area of proceeding, we don't proceed for.
And I don't doubt that, it's, it's not about the selection, it's not about who we select. It's more about, are we going to, I want to make sure that we do everything to protect you, to protect town, and to protect healthy West Orange in the process. Heather, do you, do you feel like we have everything we need here, or?
Well, Mayor, the way that.
I didn't mean to describe you there, but I just, I want to make sure. Take your time, I want to make sure. Here to hear.
The way, the way you have the agreement between the town and the Rotary written, Rotary has a lot of responsibilities in there about putting certain things in their construction contracts, identifying the town. So, what they're doing right now, I understand, is they're just asking for the approval of the, of the project manager slash owner's rep. And then the Rotary has the responsibility to do a lot of things in the written agreement.
Right.
Okay, I guess why I say this, because we're, we're partnered on this, so, you know, just because, even if we, even from the town perspective, we're completely covered. I too want to make sure that Rotary is covered, that we have a very successful venture. So, if we're comfortable with what we have from a town perspective, but if you were to look at this and say, well, I'm 100% comfortable from other exposures, I would like to know that, because then we can go ahead and get any additional information that we need, you know, quickly, so we can move along, process. You know, if, if it needs some additional legal attention, whatever, I would rather us pay upfront for that than to incur it on the back end if something doesn't go perfectly. And that, that's not, you know, that's not, not indicting anybody, it's just these things happen, especially when we get into timelines, like we've seen, paint colors and everything else, you really got to be on your own. I just want to make sure, I don't know if you guys are feeling anything similar, if you guys are comfortable and free, but I just want to make sure we're good.
Um, Mayor, I don't know who will be reviewing the Rotary agreements.
Right.
Um, but if the town would like, we have Guy Hyberg with us, the construction contracts, maybe using construction agreements for the town. Perhaps the Rotary would like to share those agreements with Guy Hyberg, who's the Mayor of Altonson, and also say, you know, hey, I think you probably need to have this. I would think there's going to be some A I A agreements, I just, I don't, I don't know what the setup's going to be yet.
Counsel, am I in the field, or are you guys good, or are you?
Uh, I was under the impression that moving forward, going forward on this, we're going to follow the same procedures that the town uses to procure vendors. And it's like, we did a couple of steps, or maybe I'm not, I'm not familiar with where we're at on this particular process. I, I didn't see an actual R F Q in there, typically our R F Qs contain documents, talk about non collusion, drug-free workplace, that type of thing. Is this vendor going to be completing those documents to make sure that we're covered as the mayor has expressed, that part of the process going forward?
Well, as we move the project forward, and let me iterate the, the confidence we have as C H A in the fact that, one, they've done, we've had no complaints whatsoever. In this, they've, that were for the city, Winter Park, that were for the city, Winkaway, they've primary provided for Orange County Convention Center. So they have vast experience, and we have found no complaints whatsoever, anyone to indicate that they were less professional and had no litigation in the process. So, we don't, we feel comfortable with Rotary Club that they're going to be able to vie this as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I think they're the best candidate, also based on literature that I read. I just want to make sure that, that this is a quasi remissable project, town is going, and with the, you know, it's going to be a fantastic pavilion. So I just want to make sure we have the same protections in place than we do with frame government, basically.
Well, and we are following, if we're following the town process, look like the town process. Right, exactly. And again, this is not about your selection in any way, shape, or form. I don't, I don't have concerns, but I also know that, that we're expected to spend the money like it's our own. But I would, if, if I'm doing that, I'm going to make sure that it looks exactly, exactly like a quantified our bidding process. That's what has, you know, my concern about.
I, I don't think they would have any issue, you know.
No, I'm totally.
These documents, just to make sure that we're covered, just like we typically do on any other R F Q. Especially, you know, something of this, this magnitude. So I think that's something that would need to be done regardless.
Council, any further comments or questions?
So, you said that the solicitation ran in, in paper, that this would go with response. How were these candidates soliciting?
Well, on, once we had approval back in the spring from you to move forward, we literally, back some of the council members have provided the fresh recommendations to us. Some that have reached out to different agencies around and find out someone, and then we're, find potential good candidates, people that have used the owner recognition. The Marvellous and the Normal recognition is someone to assist us, making sure that we cross the Ds, not the I's and everything, protecting us in the process. So that's basically, we chose to go with the other, but we got it. So I think we've all, the best procedure, the candidates came highly recommended to us, both city and candidates of the different agencies that they work with.
So, C H A, the selection, you interviewed Mr. Mellon, but is he going to be the single owner's rep, or is, is this firm going to act on that?
We're hiring his firm, not him, it's a, and the candidates that we interviewed, we're, we're hiring the firm. Those firms have vast experience doing this, a ton of companies do all sorts of type things. Orange County Convention Center hired someone to represent them to do the exact same thing we're asking. Z H A, it's, we call this, I call quite a big one, do this normal service, and we're, we're in the Orange County, West Orange County area for many years, has vast experience, has a big staff, has a decent sized staff. They are able to do it, yeah, one man showed, felt comfortable with them being able to put, putting everything on, on hand. Whereas each year, C, C H A had staff that assisted us in, for example, the workshops. Our next step will be to develop a similar plan that we, by C H A, we're going to do a similar plan for hiring a construction company. We're going to be able to assist us in doing the workshops, which they are, we have operated workshops that we're going to be doing. So, they have the ability to assist us, soliciting the correct people for construction.
And the division of responsibilities between yourself and the project and the owner's rep firm?
I'm sorry to say that.
The division of responsibilities between yourself and the owner's rep firm, is, where does that lie?
Well, he, the owner's rep, they will be working for us, I'm the project manager for, for the Rotary Club, and the, I will work with, close with them, now, also.
Okay, thanks for your questions.
And, and I think that, so I think the questions that we're asking here are a direct result of the fact that the scope of work is, it's not.
It's not what?
That the scope of work, I believe, is not detailed enough at this point, and I think, I'm not sure how it can be priced and bid and proposed if the scope of work doesn't talk about the things that you're referring to, or example, the public needs and things like that. Again, not a single comment about the individual selected, I'm just going to make sure that we have a process that would remain valid, if we have any challenges or issues. Or just to make sure that there's no back and forth in terms of, hey, that's my job, that's your job, that's, that's the town's job. Those are mine, you know, if lady first would speak, that's, that's my concern. And I think that this is something that we can, you know, that can be done in a way to clear that up. But I don't think that, for me to vote on this tonight, or ask the council to vote on this tonight, I don't think that the detail is there. Robert, do you feel like you've got what staff would need to make this work?
First, I learned about it in, when I had discussions with council about the interviews, was not until August, I think, 10th. And that was from a email from Mr. Holder who sits on the selection. I was not consulted prior to that date on the selection process by Rotary L O C. Besides my conversations with Brad Buzzman, who's our lead presentation, at the time that I was speaking with them, we were agreeing, agreeing in concepts to doing an R F Q process similar to what the town involved for an R F Q. That both protects the L O C, it also protects the town, because it's competitively bid route to take. As you see on, during the time, we have two R F Ps. The reason for that is to make it fair enough for everybody to have access to that. So, I related to Brad that I cannot be comfortable making a recommendation to town council as far as a owner's rep without following some sort of formal process. We provided Brad with the R F Q that we drafted a week prior to August 10th. And so Brad had that at the meeting that they had prior to the interviews. And then Brad did relay my concerns relative to the non-advertising of those interviews. And mind you, those people that were interviewed, interviewed on the 12th. After that, that's when they advertised in the Observer, a recommendation to them was to post not only on Observer, but also on whatever social media platforms that they have. And additionally to that, on Demandstar, which is a typical clearinghouse for a lot of, you know, owner's reps, construction companies, so on and so forth. They pretty much cast that net way out there, so nobody could say they didn't have an opportunity and didn't know about this R F Q. And again, I couldn't find out that if they did, they went on for 15 days on to Observer, which was actually advertising. And, surprisingly enough, nobody responded to that advertising. So they went with the original five. So my issue again, I think as you're stating, is not with the person or the firm that they've selected, they, they seem highly qualified. But it's not the process that I would approve, and it's not the process that I suggested that they follow. And this was prior to them, you know, doing their advertisements, so on and so forth. So, again, I cannot sit here and be conscious and say I'm in support of this firm because of the process, not because of the qualifications, but because of the process that was not followed in order to select this firm, which I believe was discussed when we were talking about the negotiations for the original contract between the town, the Rotary, and the district itself. So again, as I sit here today, again, I can't, I'm being conscious and I make a recommendation for this firm due to the process that was followed. Because again, somebody come in later and say, listen, I didn't even know that there was an R F Q out there. You know, and the only thing I'm going to be able to show them is something that wasn't in the mirror observer, that again, is not something that's industry standard as far as casting out of why you meant to get as many responses as you would want. And the only responses that they did receive were some responses that they individually solicited for. And again, our whole concern for the contract was to move away from the appearance of the property. Not saying there wasn't any, but there's still maybe that appearance at a later date. If and when this is turned over to not only your public comment, but also, this is also going to be the town's project.
Right, well, I'm looking like, you know, for example, if you wanted to protest this, there's simply, you can protest it. So, that's pretty standard, so I, I would like, let me, let me make sure that all, Norma, I see if you, you want to have a second? I want to make sure that all council comment and questions. Yes, sir.
There's an R F Q draft of my staff, surveys in Washington, Rotary.
No, go ahead, I think you have some answers, so that, that's more than I have a second.
The question was, council member staff, just so we can get on the record, I'm sorry, I didn't need to say on the record. For clarification on people that are going to be knowing this, was the town submitted an R F Q that was worked on by, not on myself, like Ray Robinson, or Guy Hack. And it was similar to what we did toward the town facilities. That was submitted to Brad Buzzman on August 3rd, he was on vacation, said he'd get back to me with any comments. But that was a document that could have easily been transitioned to a Rotary L O C document, just by changing names and headers.
So it was a template type document that we had used previously as a sample for, for Rotary to utilize if they so chose. That is an approved down process, not Robert's process, not Jim's process, it's an approved down process to procure.
Mayor, I have one thing.
Yes.
The, if you remember, there was an agreement between the district and the Rotary.
Yes.
That was for the money. Then we did the agreement between the Rotary and the town, which had nine specific things that the Rotary needs to do. And the very first thing is, select a project, this is the Rotary's requirements, select a project manager slash owners representative using a procurement process decreed upon by the town manager and Rotary. So I think that's really the issue here, is whether Robert had his input here in the process. And if not, then I think the process needs to be redone.
Okay, so that leads me to a second question, I'll ask the council, David's question about, a little bit of confusion between project manager and representative, you know, the way it's worded there, I assume that this same person, you know, seemingly there's two different entities here, you, Mr. Sutton, and then whoever is hired, so I just want a better understanding of the role of each end. I think that, again, I assume what was just reiterated there, just one person that's handling the project, and that would be the first intention on the table tonight.
Norma Sutton, 505 West Second Avenue, I just wanted to comment that the owner's rep is a very unique position. There are not very many companies that provide owner's representatives, it is a very small, tiny amount of money. One of the reasons, maybe we didn't get responses because it wasn't wide enough, but I'm saying this is a very small amount of money. There are not a lot of people interested in doing this. The company that we've chosen wants to do this, give back to the community. This person will work for the Rotary Club as the owner's representative for the construction liaison with the town to manage, to make sure that things are done, they will be Byron's, you know, right-hand man that will oversee this project. It's a, it's an important job, but. It's a, it's an important job, but the construction company and the process that we have to go through, which will be very elaborate for the construction company will be very different and they will have a project name different, you know, so there will be people involved. So I guess my point is, it's very hard to make this a very robust process when you're looking for a person that's going to work for a few pennies, literally less than one percent of this project. It's a very small contractual position. There will be the liaison between town, the Rotary Club, and the construction company. They will vet, um, that the job has been done, review the finances, review the invoices, then the Rotary, the Rotary will have responsibility to make sure that is all done and our obligation to make sure it's done and that the town knows it's done. By the way, we have the four proposals which we did not share from the four companies. They're all very professional, they're all very detailed and so they are all bid by hours worked and what they're going to do as far as how much time with the construction company, how much time with the Rotary Club, and I'm, you know, a lot of detail in those four proposals. So this scope was just a general, um, qualification because the owner's reps are very professional and they know exactly what the job is. I don't know if that helps. Um, we will, they have a contract, you know, written, which we don't have. We just have proposals at this point.
So it does help a little bit, but I mean, I think the fact that you guys have the proposals, we don't have the proposals. We have a bid mark number one on our agreement and, and I believe that it's, it's fair to say I'm not looking for, this doesn't have to be RFQs. It's, it's really just if you'll just utilize the template, which has documentation attached, it's well-written, it's, it's already vetted and approved. We can utilize that, advertise on DemandStar and move forward. You can even bring, bring the five people that you already had, um, express their interest that they can continue in the process. Um, but I mean, if someone else jumps in, then you would score them as well. So this is not a, because there's all these factors that are not, they're not taken into consideration. I don't, we don't have, we don't have the proposals that you were given and I can't even tell you what they bid on. So it's very difficult to give you an answer, yes or no. I, I, I see your frustration, but I mean, it's, it does not have to be difficult. I'm not looking at it difficult. I'm trying to protect everybody here.
What's bothering concerns me in the process is the fact that this is a Rotary project. We're making a donation, we're going to build a project that will be all specifications, has to be, all read, all codes, all requirements and such. And that we will then donate that to the city, to the town. And you physically, but, but, uh, our purpose in the owner's rep, but it was our idea to hire our owner's rep, not yours. But, uh, it was never suggested, our purpose as Rotary Club was to hire someone that, uh, to use as an advisor to me in the process of getting this done, to assist us in hiring a construction company, vet all qualifications and that. So they're, they are a consultant, uh, for us. They're not going to run the project, uh, every day from a point of view. Their, their job is to consult and help us get the construction company, get the architect, get everything kind of together to make sure that the project itself will be, uh, our, all the desires of the community. That's the reason we're doing the two, uh, uh, conferences so that we get initial input. We've already had an input. We've spent almost three years getting to this point. We've gone through the architects and designed it, that means tons of meetings to get to this point. So right now, the person that we're hiring to, or, or interested in hiring is someone that is willing to consult us, assist us, and be able to do it. As, uh, Norm pointed out, dollars and cents wise, this is, this is only a few thousand dollar job. Who is it? This is a fair, that's.
So, Mr. Sutton, so, and, and first of all, I want to be really clear. Council has been incredibly supportive and appreciative all along the way as we've been going through this process. I know that this seems like a small amount of dollars, friends, twenty-five to thirty-five or fifty thousand dollars, right? These things though, if not done properly, can trip us up. The funds that are going to be utilized to pay for this position come from where? They come from the Rotary.
They come from Rotary Club.
The Rotary funds?
Hundred percent Rotary funds. They are granted, they are, we, we get, we have assistance, which the, uh, the funding is provided to us because we're a Rotary club. But it's a Rotary project. They give the money, they've given the money to us to fill this project. So it's our money, it's our donation to the town. It's, they're not donating it to the town, whatever.
But they're helping West Orange, they got the funds, you gave me the pass. I'm sorry, are they helping West Orange funds or the foundation funds being passed through the Rotary, right?
They're healthy, healthy West Orange funds that were given to Rotary and Rotary Club to, for us to do a project. To build this, to build a, for the town.
Are they for us, so they're, they're foundation dollars?
No, those aren't that. They were foundation dollars that belonged to Healthy West Orange. That those funds were given to us, we are in possession of, we have the money to do it. So they are now Winnebago Rotary Foundation, five oh one C three nonprofit corporation by us. Spent the way that we choose to spend.
So we're, we're, the, the, what we're going to do is we're going to uphold the bargain and agreement that we have arranged with you to this point in time. And I, number one, that we're going to follow. Can you, can you read that language for me again, Heather?
Yes, mayor, I'll read one more piece that I think is important. And the very first part says, select a project manager slash owner's representative utilizing a process, procure a process agreed upon by the town manager and the Rotary.
Have we met that criteria? Robert, do you feel like we met that criteria?
No, with my discussions with Brad, the bare minimum that I would agree to was the advertising in a newspaper of local, um, distribution. The Sentinel, maybe the Observer, I didn't have an objection with that. Um, tier two was to advertise on their social media outlets. And then tier three was to put on DemandStar.
All right. I, I have more than spoken in my piece, but I just want to make sure, and again, this is not to be difficult. This is to protect everyone here. And I want to make sure that we have the best and successful project possible. Um, at this point, council, I'll leave this to you. Whether you guys would like to.
Yeah, real quick too, just, just to protect her a little bit. She is a legal counsel for the district as well as the town of Winnebago. Um, but I do want to say there is an agreement between the LLC and Healthy West Orange, or the healthier district.
Right.
So the LLC does not live up to the agreements that they enter into with the, um, districts. And the district can come back and get that one. It's not just handed over to me.
Absolutely. I mean, I know these things can happen and, and I don't think that is what it's going to happen. But I want to make sure that isn't what's going to happen because even if they can, I, I remember, how much money did FEMA claw back from us? Four hundred thousand bucks?
So we're four hundred thousand dollars ten years later.
Ten years ago. So I don't think that's going to happen, but it does happen. And I don't want it to happen in anything that this council did so recently. So we just want to make sure, we make sure we've got everything done perfectly. And if you need help to make that happen, uh, we'll find it later. We can get it for you. Guys are very capable, but I mean, if you need legal or whatever you need, we'll make it happen.
We have legal, sir. And we followed it by their advice. He had a conversation, obviously.
All right.
Whatever.
That's, I, I don't have a vote, so, um, I'm going to let council weigh in, uh, some further and, uh, if you guys want to vote on this, let's make a motion. You would like it to, um, go back and be procured according to the agreement that we all stated would be followed. Make a motion to the House and then we'll come back whenever you need us to come back to make it happen.
Counsel, you got it.
I just wanted to finish reading that one section. Um, the rest of it says that project manager slash owner's representative will be moved by the town council of the town of Winnebago. And the project manager slash owner's representative must not be a member of the town council or the Rotary.
So, so again, I think my question got answered. This project manager, owner representation that was presented tonight, I think. Maybe you're claiming to be the project manager, but the agreement says otherwise. That's why I'm trying to get that written to the wall. And it is, um, as the project manager.
I, I roll?
Correct. As you said several times, as you as a project manager with the owner's representative working side by side. You as your right-handed person, just trying to get a better understanding of what that means. I'm interested in that as well.
Okay, I did, I, I was that, I am the project manager for the Rotary Club.
Project manager for the Rotary.
We are hiring. That's the reason I made the clarification, uh, beginning with. It's the fact that we are hiring, hiring one position. Right, period. That one position is the owner's rep for us, Winnebago Rotary Club. I, I am the project person that Rotary Club is responsible for, for this project. On a day-to-day basis, for the purpose they want is to hire a owner's rep working for us, Winnebago Rotary Club, by one C three. To make sure that this project is done effectively, efficiently, so we are.
Working for you as the project manager?
Yes.
So, read that for me one more time, Heather, because now I need to make sure that.
And mayor, I do have, um, wait, the town and the district. Um, the project manager slash owner's representative does not be a member of the town council for the Rotary. And this is language that we went over very specifically here, um, with attorneys for the Rotary and the attorney that Robert brought in, um, here to talk about this project.
Okay. Counsel, any further input?
Nice person, Deb. Yeah, just real quick, Mayor, I think where we land here is you can go out and do the solicitation with the approved RFQ. Revalidate the proposals you have with that RFQ that pressed forward. I would also like to see the division of responsibilities because the language the council just read clearly states that we're looking for a separate, um, independent project manager or owner's rep. You know, not a consultant to you to be the project manager. That was our check.
And I think one thing too, that's very important to mention, regardless of who's classifying whose funds they are, all of the records, such as the proposals that have been received by the Rotary, all of those records are public records.
Exactly. And, and that's why I asked if we had that because we did not. So, um, just for the record. That's why I, uh, we, just you, make a motion. We table this. Maybe I, I, I think that might be a good way to go. Uh, I, because I'm, I'm concerned that, that we're this far off track. We haven't started yet. Uh, we'd be spending a lot of time working on this agreement. Um, and our agreements on how it moves forward and, uh, but my concern is at this point, we're not even close to what we talked about. So I think concern is going forward. We, we need to get back on track right now, today, before we take another step. So that would be my recommendation. If, if, uh, if council agrees, I think we can table this motion until we have further discussion on, uh, on the process. I will leave that to, uh, Robert and have that conversation. Um, I mean, at the very basics, we have to follow the agreement to the T. If we cannot do that, we cannot move forward. No matter how few people look at it, I want it more than anybody. Norm, go ahead, please.
I just want to reiterate, because it sounds like we're still in confusion, the Rotary Club is hiring the owner's representative. That was an agreement between the Rotary Club and Healthy West Orange that had nothing to do with the town. The Rotary Club does not have construction expertise or owner's representative expertise or any expertise in building. So our agreement about the West Orange was that we would hire an owner's rep to represent the Rotary Club. My question is, is the town going to hire an owner's rep of the town? Because this is not a town owner's rep.
Correct.
This is the Rotary's owner's rep and we are responsible as the Rotary Club to confirm the job is being done, the invoices, that the payment is correct, that the finances are tracked, and we have to submit all of those records and documents to Healthy West Orange. So this owner's rep is working for the Rotary. I just want to make sure that that's clear. And if the town needs to hire an owner's rep, that's a different subject.
So I imagine it will be a construction manager and then the, the project manager language came from the Healthy West Orange agreement and the district agreement, right? If I'm not mistaken?
The owner's rep language came from that. We have stated from the beginning that Byron is committee chair and project manager for the Rotary. The agreement between Rotary and Healthy West Orange was that the Rotary would hire, to work for the Rotary, an owner's rep. So our, our responsibility to Healthy West Orange is that we will have an owner's rep who will manage invoices and finances and construction and what have you, to be able to report back to Healthy West Orange to be sure that everything's being done correctly. The construction company will have their own project manager and that's my question, is the town want an owner's rep to represent the town?
I don't believe that that's what we're going to need. I, I believe that, but I do believe that, I know that we outlined it in the agreement to take care of everything that would be needed to accomplish the successful completion of the project.
Which came from the agreement between the Rotary Club and Healthy West Orange.
Correct.
And like I said, from the beginning, there was confusion. Uh, and even in this agenda, it says both the project manager and the owner's rep, and that is an error. We're not hiring a project manager. We are hiring an owner's rep. The Rotary Club is hiring an owner's rep.
But what Byron just said is that we're hiring an owner's rep. For Byron, who is the project manager? Did I mishear that?
Well, yes, for Rotary, he's the chairman, the committee chair, and therefore the project manager. We have event managers, project managers, service project managers. So this is a service project. So Byron's the service project manager for this, um, project. Where the name project manager comes from, it has nothing to do with construction. He's the service project manager. And that's why we said in the agreement with the Healthy West Orange and the Rotary Club that we would hire an owner's representative. A person experienced in construction, who knows how to put the qualifications together, the requirements, the documents, the contracts, will follow the whole process of advertising on all the sites and what have you. So that person is the experienced person. We're not. That's why we want to hire this person. And that's why we agreed to hire this person.
Absolutely. I'm not an engineer, but when I hire an engineer to spend federal funds or, or five oh one C three funds or private funds, we have to make sure that we have the proper procurement policies and procedures taken care of. Because if we don't, then we're at risk. And that's exactly where I believe we find ourselves tonight. And I, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but I believe that's where we are. So I want to make sure that number one, we, every piece of the agreement that we signed together. And I, and I haven't heard all of the criteria again to see if you refresh me, but two of them I think I'm concerned about. And there's enough confusion up here that, that I don't see anyone comfortable to vote. So I think that we better table it and regroup and figure a way forward, which I know we can do, but I think that's what we should do.
Absolutely, and we will. And it will delay the project two to three months by doing this process and we'll probably come up with the same recommendation.
I don't think that perhaps to delay it, um, three months because we're not going to take three months i- i- if, if we can sit down.
How long do we have to advertise it for?
It'll be more than a couple of weeks.
Well, we already did advertise a couple of weeks.
I'd rather spend two weeks now than delay everything.
No, I'm asking how long we could last advertise.
What's the procurement policies?
We typically advertise for thirty days. The town council at any time, from all special meeting, based upon the recommendation of the selection committee. The language that keeps getting referenced is the agreement between the district and the LLC, the agreement between Rotary and the town, specifically states, it's kind of basic from the actual agreement, select the project manager and owner's representative for both. And the reason for that was in the grant, it lists this project manager receiving a hundred thousand dollars. And then when it came up that, okay, well, we can be a project manager for the Rotary, Byron, you know, was saying that he was a project manager, which then gives a realization of, okay, less kind of conflict because there's some funds from that war, that's why that language is specifically made. But in there, Byron's position was to be project champion, not project manager. This is based on my recollection of not only discussions prior to that meeting, but also in the meeting itself.
Okay, you can correct the labels on everybody.
That's what we're, that's what we're missing. Right, it's project manager, it's construction project manager is what we're referencing.
Project champion is something very, very different, and service project manager would be something totally different. So, you know, pay or not pay, correct, all of those things, but listen, if there's this much confusion up here, I just don't feel like it's the right move to make. Let's look at how we can advertise it, let's look how we can utilize the template. I'll call a special meeting to save time. You know, we're, we're in this with you, but I want to make sure that we do it right and that we don't trip over ourselves out of the gate with any confusion and give any sense that we're not exactly all certain which direction we're heading and how we're going to get there.
I actually appreciate the fact that you guys got five people. That's long.
Absolutely.
I mean, we've done road projects and got zero, and so I think there's more interesting things, but.
And it's not, it's not about, it's not about the five people, it's not about who you select. I believe that they're a thousand percent all of them. But I just want to make sure that we have, I see Byron, I know you're frustrated, but.
I, I'm frustrated. I built this program up myself for the fiftieth anniversary. I put together a committee, we worked for three years to get to a point. I don't get a single set out of this, there's never been any way, no one in Rotary gets paid for any of anything, everything we do is volunteer basis.
Sure.
So there was no money in the interest to me, period, in relation to that. Your implication is that I resent this, the fact that someone here believes that Byron is going to get paid a lot of money to do this. I'm not getting paid a cent to do this. I'm doing this with benevolent purpose of creating something for the town of Windermere, and the same thing with Rotary. We've been doing this for fifty years. I've been in Rotary for fifty-two years. I'm on my fifty-third year. This is our fifty-year program. I built this porch out here on the back for you when I was president for our fortieth anniversary. And frankly, we didn't have, we had no problem. Everybody was benevolent or liked to receive the net. And now, for some reason or other, it's like, it's, we've become, we have to put us in a position where you want us to run all these ads. We're red ads, we didn't get a single person. We had this whistle. In fact, a couple of people on your council fair recommended people, they came and talked to me, said, Hal, I'm not interested in that, cool it, cool it. There's nothing else, I'm paying anybody to do it, so I'm not willing to do it. And when you do the construction, I want to be on the construction for a second quarter.
Byron, and let me be clear. Now, you've been really clear, and I want to be as clear as you. It's not what anyone up here is saying. That, that confusion and that misinformation came from a budget deadline, I am in the proposed, and, and it's, it's, it's the carefulness that we have to have with these terms, all right? Project champion versus project manager, project, you know? So all of these things we have to be cautious with. That's why, because I don't want, I don't want anyone anywhere to think that, that you're receiving something that you shouldn't be doing or not doing something out of pure benevolency, nor do I want anyone to think or say that we as a town or a council are doing anything that's inappropriate either. If we said and wrote in an agreement that we all signed that we're going to utilize the process, let's just do that, come out of the gate and do it, do it exactly like we said we were, so we don't run into any challenges down there, that's all I'm saying. We are most appreciative, incredibly appreciative, but we've got to do this right, because it's a million dollar project. It's real money, and I want to make sure that it's a perfect thing.
You can talk, all right? Perfect, it's a, I guess. Do you have a motion to table or is it table?
I mean, I'd like to be motioned to table until the future, either special call meeting or regular town council meeting. We're not going to make the thirty days with the next town council meeting because it's on October twelve. So, you know, I'd be comfortable doing a three-week RFQ, and that would give them time to, you know, review.
Let's do that, and we'll do this as quickly as we possibly can.
Yeah, I know, I know this thing, we just went through this in summer, and Robert just talked about this earlier, he called, also, when he was receiving, for the ones that had to go and, you know, redid it now, so. It's unfortunate, but it's not our first time, absolutely, back, backwards, make sure we don't have to go way backwards, as you mentioned before, you know, have a few minutes of, of the conference.
Right, that's all we're talking about. Um, that's, I'd request a motion to table until the next town council meeting or special call.
Fair enough, we've got a motion to table this until the next town hall at halftime. They got, enter that motion to table the advertising period in three.
Second. Second, any discussion, counsel? Seeing none, we begin voting, counsel person leaves.
Aye.
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 Thank you, counsel. Counsel, next, over time, I don't send public hearing matters. Under new business item A, minutes, counsel, you can approve these as item one and two together, or you can hold them for separate comment.
Motion to approve both items.
Second. Motion to approve, counsel person waiting, second, counsel person David. Counsel, any discussion or comment? Seeing none, we begin voting, counsel person David.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next, second is item B, this is resolutions ordinance for approval and first reading. This is ordinance number two, or two thousand twenty-one dash zero two, this is home-based businesses. This is for the purpose of correcting conflicts in current code with due language and laws from the state of Florida. This is an ordinance of the town of Windermere, Florida, amending sections one point zero three point zero two and seven point zero three point zero one of the town's land development code and section eight dash nineteen of the town's land development code regarding home occupations to be consistent with the new general law on home-based businesses, providing for codification, conflicts, separability, and effective date. It will also have a public hearing as secondary to our next scheduled town council meeting for this item, ordinance number twenty-two dash seven two. Next up is item C, contracts and agreements, counsel, we have in front of you our FY twenty twenty-two renewal of agreement for on-call and planning services. This is for weight trim and staff recommended.
Mayor is in position of that approval, I would, at the condition that we do an RFQ for years twenty-two, twenty-three.
Thank you, Norman, that's, agree with that? Make sure that we are, we're in a regular RFPs, RFQs for all of our vendors. Counsel, any, would a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, counsel person leaves, second. Oh, but I, that was close, can I give that one, counsel person Martini? Any comments or questions, counsel? Clarification that, that you would say RFP for twenty-two, what was the date for the next one, right? September twenty-two?
We would advertise the RFQ probably within the next few months as a selection made, and the services would begin October first, twenty-two.
Right. Brad, you're sitting there, but it says nothing to do with, you guys have done great work, we love you, but we want to make sure that we follow everything these states. Counsel, any further comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, we begin voting, counsel person Martini?
Aye.
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 Counsel, passing unanimously. Item two is continuation of water system master plan, this is amendment number one for the weight trim agreement, thirty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty attachment is in your packet and staff recommends approval, counsel. No motion to approve?
Motion to approve, continuation of water system master plan.
Motion to approve, counsel person David, approve it, second counsel.
Okay.
Second, counsel person leaves. Any comments or concerns, counsel? Seeing none, we begin voting, counsel person David.
Aye.
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 Item number three is the RFP for number two thousand twenty-one dash zero three, is their audit services for the town of Windermere. The attachment is part of your packet, counsel, staff recommends approval. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, counsel person leaves, second, second. Second, counsel person David, any comments, concerns, or questions, counsel on this item? Seeing none, we begin voting, counsel person David.
Aye.
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 Item number four is RFP twenty-two-one dash zero five, this is the town of Windermere Lakes Management for Aqua Stem Consulting. Staff recommends approval, I believe, you have a little presentation or just hearing questions?
I'm here for questions and I can give a little bit of an overview.
That'd be fine.
Okay. So what we did in July is staff posted an RFP twenty-two-one dash zero five for Lakes and Consulting Services, it's a partnership. We have lots of lakes for the town of Windermere. Also, we have aquatic vegetation that needs some oversight. We also have the street sweeping company, we have the Lakes Treatment Company and the back truck company. All of these services eventually can add issues to the lake system. So we wanted to have an expert who's available to us watching these three vendors, making sure they're doing what they're doing, checking the lakes, also assisting residents. Counsel Martini and I have dealt with several questions from residents about aquatic plantings along the lake shore and what's the base of what is it, what's the process, how do you work the portion of EPE on all of that? So this person will be a resource to residents as well. I think it's something that's actually critical because the chain of lakes and all the lakes in Windermere is beautiful, and you want to ensure that you're looking after those. What we did is a RFP process, which we've been talking a lot about today. We had a committee that looked at those. I accused myself of that because I have worked for several cities and worked with lots of lakes consultants, and I just wanted to ensure the process was as pure as it could be. So the committee was Mr. David, thank you, it was John Fitzgibbon, and it was Travis on my team. We received one submittal, because it's a very specific type of skill and expertise required for this. Received one submittal, the committee looked at it, they went back and asked that submittal for further information, breakdown on each of the five categories, how much under each category, and then they provided hourly rates for any work that might be above those five tasks and funding associated with that. The committee then reviewed that and did recommend that we move forward and ask counsel to approve this consultant for an October start date, if it's clear.
Thank you, and I appreciate that explanation. Counsel person David, you have anything to add since you're, please?
Uh, no, just a question, I confused myself with the vote because I was on the selection committee.
No, sir. Counsel, do we have a motion to approve, let counsel David, counsel David have that first, correct that one.
All right. Motion to approve the town of Windermere Lakes Management to Aqua Stem Consulting.
We have a second. Second, counsel person Sat. Or was that Martini?
Sorry.
You made the second, counsel person Sat made the second, counsel person Martini has a question.
Yeah, I want a question, I didn't see Lake Vessie indicated, I did, talking about Lake Bum or Lake Dam, Wassey on there, and is Lake Vessie's for mine included?
Absolutely, all the lakes within the town, including the permitting that we're responsible for, ensuring that that gets done, this person will be watching all of that, yes.
Thank you.
All of our bodies, yes.
That's something to add to the.
Yes.
RFQ.
Yeah, we'll add it to the contract.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, counsel, any further comments or questions? Seeing none, we begin voting with counsel person David.
Aye.
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 Anything going on, you guys alternating, that's good.
It's good.
All right, thank you, counsel, we appreciate that. And under other items for consideration, this is an update on the status of negotiations with boathouse tenants and actions by the town, counsel. This is a discussion item only, and counselor Ramos and counsel person Martini.
I'm just awaiting for the appraiser. Robert?
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Ferrers this afternoon, and he will be submitting the appraisal of the fair market rate, some insurance, the right terms, it's to get a three. We'll save it just on that. But once I receive that document, I will share it with counsel Martini and Mr. Polk as well as the other boathouse tenants, and to see if there's any anomalies or any, you know, issues with the analysis, and if we can hopefully resolve this prior to the October twelve town council meeting. The appraiser will be here on October twelve to go over his analysis and answer any questions that the council may have. As far as the boathouse lease itself, I know it's in draft form, there's been several iterations of that, so it's up to, again, our legal counsel hands, either the legal counsel of the boathouse tenants or the tenants themselves to review the terms of that lease.
And we're, we're very close on that.
We did go over it right after the last council meeting, I got on a phone call with counsel Martini and Mr. Polk, and we went over it, and I circulated a draft, so I, I haven't heard back yet, but I think counsel Martini indicated that we're pretty close.
Yeah, we're, we're down to fixing type votes and that kind of thing. But there, there is a discussion item that we, that I wanted to bring up here, and the eligibility for a boathouse lease is obviously, you know, precedent, indicates in the lease that they have to provide ownership documentation, but what about long-term renters? People who live in the town, but they don't own the property, but they rent here, is that something that we also want to consider eligible? Like, obviously, they're eligible to run the town council, I think, as long as they're resident, they so.
Yeah, they live in the town.
So, yeah, I think it's a long stay of residency, which we can probably support for a license, they use.
There's a, there's like a factual test used by the supervisor of elections to determine whether you're actually a resident for purposes of being able to vote, because there are instances when we have a summer home and a winter home, those kind of things. So there's, there's a, it's a factual testing, I think that's.
I like the factual tests, let's keep that up. I was going to say. We're, we're. But, yeah, and if they move, obviously, if you like any other, let's see if they would lose the lease, revert back to the town. Anyway. George, you have a hand over there? I saw him standing in the back, just. It's about the boathouse.
Yes, it's about the.
Get that, get that.
The old, that George Pober's qualified, Mr. The older I get, I feel like I'm getting a little bit nicer, I don't know if that's really happening, but lately I've been thinking that for some reason we have two years and one balance, so I should do twice as much as walking. So I don't really have a lot to say. We are getting close, I appreciate that, and hopefully the biggest hurdles we have, I think, are coming, but they're not in. And hopefully, the biggest hurdles we have, I think, are coming, but they're not in sort of, I think, we'll have something soon. We'll get this documentation from the appraiser and see what comes from there.
I appreciate your operations for and coffee.
But you expect me to believe that you're just drinking this coffee?
So far, we've been only doing it during the day, so it's okay.
Yeah, you better be aware of where you're getting right.
Alright, fair enough, George. Thanks, sir. Alright, I believe that is our final item for the speaker. Switch over to Mayor. Council leaders on their words. Yeah, but I believe it's a very nice, respectful nine eleven. I want to make sure that I thank everyone who attended. Thank Chief and the media of our, their role, very important family church knocked it out of the park. We did everything that they did and it was really, really nice. Chief, Chief help us connect with a really great keynote. So I thought we. I thought it was what makes us great. Very nice to see everybody. And to see the amount of people that were actually really tied into the tragedy itself there, choosing to come here. Just really feeling that you're welcome to. Here, Tom. Really nice. I want to thank you all for making that possible as well as town staff, Diane, Paul Polkher, all those guys are out there helping out. Next year, we won't be chairs out like this. Everybody was like, are you making a statement with the empty chairs? I'm like, I don't know. Maybe. So, but it was, it was very well done and a total, so thanks to everybody. Typically, I, or the mayor typically sits on this full advisory meeting for Windermere Lakes. They usually have Tuesday or Wednesday meetings. Their Wednesday afternoon meetings are super hard to reach. If anyone is interested in the work of the staff, I would certainly recommend you and Principal Beer. But I just want to make sure it's somebody that really wants to be there. I don't think it would impact fishing or voting or anything.
I wish I was fishing and voting back to vote two points. Let's talk about it.
Think about it, right?
It's been too hot, it's open shelter everywhere.
Thank you, guys. Take care. Alright, so I do appreciate that. Council, any additional, Council?
I have a couple items to note. The tree board met and they talked about the tree tribute. Not going to have a typical tribute like we had years past. We're going to replicate what we did last year, tree giveaway, which is fantastically successful and one day well organized and everyone's thrilled when the town came out. So we're going to do that again, especially with, you know, the pandemic lurking. And it takes a lot of planning, advanced planning to put on a tribute like we had years past. So we're just going to go with the tribute. And in addition to that, Wine and Dine has announced that they are going to move forward with Wine and Dine. On Saturday, we're extended. We're going to limit the tickets to six hundred people rather than twelve hundred like we had two years ago. So stay tuned for that. It's still going to be a great event, although scaled down also because of pandemic. And if things change between now and November, December, wherever the noise expands and if I can get any on sold tickets, I can assure you that it's always a tough event. And then lastly, the Run Among the Lakes is coming up in October. We got a sample medals for those. Someone passing around a little show and tell if you guys book that. It's got a beer opener on it. This is the, we start up there. We start with the beer opener, perfect. To the, to the medal itself. It's supposed to replicate an orange crate. And then we've got two different langers, one for the five K, one for the ten K. Alligator skin print with the belly of the alligator on the inside. Really a fantastic job that the designer did and had me as well. And the house printing, I don't know how many of those are going to be, but it's going to be a big event. What do you want to keep? I'm not running. People are missing the five K, so it's like, alright. So if you haven't signed up, I think there's a discount going on right now. I got a text message. It's like three dollar off or five dollar off. Mine's a few run, we'll take one. Guys, they're going on cheese. That's, what is, that's October eighth, I think, right? Sixteenth.
Council, any additional?
Yeah, real quick.
Go ahead.
Westmore's chief or Economic General Advisory Committee. Coming in probably on the agenda this week, the unaccountable, probably next, but in reference to, or quite, quite a good session. And I'm checking going, I'm going to hear. Go to state, go to Florida State and Fulton. I know that my garden and wouldn't have some concerns with it. And, you know, there'd be some sort of recommendations to Westmore's chamber or, I just want to kind of make sure. We don't really have a dog in the hounds, but they are our neighbors and we give them support. I just want to make sure that you guys behind me give them support. They're definitely going to need a one percent sales tax. Expect to be a much easier comes up, but also that effort's interesting.
Council, any thoughts or comments? Stay tuned to it. There's a lot of information, both pro and con, on our apps. It's pretty easy to get it.
Yeah, H B B net, we have really good connection net in the old store. Kind of outlined some upcoming scout projects, kind of where things are going. There's one coming up on replacing the well pit. Well, it's decorative, a flagpole, and then looking at some other landscaping, kind of prepping to get the parking lot back. Careless go away and that kind of thing. Holiday Coopla has also met several times this fall. They are on schedule. Coming up some really creative ideas to give us some spacing and even we're shooting out of Santa. It just won't be sit on its lap. It'll be roaming and they've got some really good ideas. So they're all, everything's all on the place payment.
Thanks, sir. Councilperson David?
And Parks and Recs, the, say, the Run Among the Lakes sixteen, there's four hundred and ninety people signed up. That's a right here. So I said thirteen in every week. So I bet that was painful. They're also, could be bringing on September thirtieth, a workshop for the playground and football courts. And they're also, I know you can offset the rest of the, and, you know, the presence, that's something that in the future I would ask by Parks and Recs. We're still having it sometime. I hope, I assume we were, but I didn't know the official word on that, so.
Your.
Dylan.
Awesome.
Your trust.
Farmers Market, we had more, more vendors in trucks, but not that, not much.
Vaccination vehicle, mobile vaccination plan. Be back at food trucks as well next week.
Farmers Market.
Farmers Market, I'm sorry.
This, this.
It should have it for sure.
Farmers Market is Friday. Unfortunately, we had zero people utilized. We have one sign up.
Alright, I'll go ahead. One at a time. Councilperson Davin?
I didn't have any additional, while we're in, I mean, didn't be, Robert, I'll defer to you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all you do. We will go, this is Sat. Senator?
Yes. Project meeting does, we send out to you tomorrow. Sort of going back to the RFP again, and if you have seen the draft RFP, you have applied to the Rotary. All is a couple of changes, again, with the names and dates, and I can get that tomorrow. So I'll work with Brad Busman and/or Byron or whoever else wants to work with the town on getting that, or if I say it's. Project meeting, we held that on Monday? That's right. We're all wanting to get it this point. So I have a project meeting notes out to you tomorrow, and you can see what progress we're making on several of the ongoing projects that we have. Some of the issues that we're facing right now is, you know, with Orange County Utilities. Not only is the town having those issues, but also some of the local developments are having issues with Orange County Utilities. That's one of the reasons why we have to respond and request additional information. So thanks for approving the utility master plan update. So as Orange County Utilities went forward with that master plan, but they are going to look at the plans that were already in place for Bestin Butler, West Second Avenue, regardless of what happens with that, or any sort of master plan. We have Ways Committee tomorrow night. Councilmember David and I work with not only the Ways Committee, but also the Orange County Library System on implementing a new platform for parents and toddlers to learn sign language. It's what I utilize for my kids when they're growing up because a lot of times they can communicate verbally, so that's the way they communicate is with sign language. You know, so we're going to tie in not only the story that they read because typically they have stories on, I think, it's Tuesdays and Fridays. Thursdays, okay. We're going to tie in with the story and also teach the parents and the kids on how to do milk. More, please, thank you, stuff like that. So again, it's a great way for the Ways Committee members to involve in that as well. Tomorrow night, we have our Ways Committee meeting at six thirty. To, because of the COVID pandemic and because they haven't been able to really do events right now, we're starting to get, you know, guest interest. So the first one we had tomorrow night is going to be a financial planner, you know, have a plan once their, once their parents are report. You know, how to bank account, how to, what's a savings account, what's an IRA, what's money markets and so forth. The next guest we're going to have is an admissions officer from a local college to ask, to ask, answer questions that they have. You know, what do they look for on application? What do they look for as far as, you know, do they look at volunteer? Do they look at, you know, your test scores? Or is it combination? So it's an opportunity for them to get direct answers from somebody that has admissions to give them a heads up for people that are juniors or have the ability to apply next year. We have D R B on, or actually we have on the twentieth, which is Monday night, we have our final budget hearing. Again, that's going to be live. On the twenty-first, we have D R B and on the twenty-second, we have town major Q and A. And on September twenty-fourth, we have National Lab Hour, which is food trucks. So we'll have various agencies with their vehicles out in the back and we'll also have touch truck with public works, town builders going to be playing. So it should be a really, really busy night because it's going to be the first large event that the town is going to have. We're going to encourage as much as we can, but again, it's, it's going to be busy.
It's going to be big, yes.
So we're planning for that. We'll have some swag for the kids. We're going to be buying some maps on Foundation Park. You know, for people that are attending, there's no one who would be able to buy enough for anybody that's in that event. We also have Cots and Bobbers and I believe that she will go ahead and discuss that. But as I said before, we are immediately barbecuing on-call land planning services as well as our building inspection services and also legal services. I'll say that we're not happy with the legal services. But again, we want to make sure we have a consistency that every three to five years, we're going ahead and putting that out there. So there'll be a question, you know, how we select our vendors or why we've had certain vendors for the amount of time we've had. So, so.
And that's just all about us being, you know, we're going to do exactly what we ask other people. So that's the only way we can be transparent and take our names. And of course, they can understand their sign language and dates, so I just always go back to that. We need the fliers to be that camp.
Believe me, I have one of your.
I was wondering which signs you were going to do and which ones you were. I'm going to go ahead and do that just to, it's an easy handoff that you have to take. Do a call back later.
I was going to say.
I'll, related to the name for town, I have to go with the state memorial as opposed to that, that maybe this is going to come out with us. We do have two rooms left, so if anybody wants to come, please let me know by tomorrow.
It's Saturday night.
It's Saturday night. Leaving Saturday, come back Sunday, and we're looking forward to that. Also, Temple Dome, this is an interpretation, it's in German, it's going to be the Kentucky keynote speaker. So we're going to have a, you know, big, big event there. Again, I have two rooms left, so please let me know by tomorrow. For some reason, you can make it. We'll, we'll get rid of it tomorrow afternoon, honestly, I think. Also, thanks for the Councilmen and the Mayor coming out to lead their post office identification. I thought those were in service for that. National Lab, Robert had mentioned, the next food truck night, so the Farm Cots and Bobbers, October twenty-third. I will send an email out tomorrow about that, October sixteenth, but everyone's already been mentioned. And also October second, if you guys can pencil that in here in the area. You know, I've been involved with the Western Dream Center. That's eight years since we opened up last year. And the Windermere Police Department Foundation has done some fundraising and actually we helped sponsor the computer room. Computer lab room, which is being used quite a bit over there in our garden. And we're going to be opening up from nine o'clock to eleven in the morning. That's something else. Get to come in and see a lot of the different things that we're doing, talk with folks, volunteer. Oh, I deny I'll be there as well. And if you have got a chance to see that, it's a, it's a great community project. I'm so glad for shit that the, the Windermere Police Department Foundation sponsored that. The computer lab was huge at, and it's probably daily there by the kids at the committee, parents in the committee, learning all kinds of life skills, classes. Thanks for that interest. It's just been very much amazing.
What's the date of that announcement?
They were October second, nine o'clock to eleven. So I will send something out tomorrow, probably Thursday afternoon on that. Just give the address and locations. Stop by, see the center. Yeah, I'm not quite sure what it does, but it's a great community project. And then, that's it, I mean.
Precision safety sidewalks, finishing up sidewalks this week. They were raining a little bit over the last couple of weeks, but they're going to be from Wednesday and Thursday. And in hopes that the weather holds, we'll get that all done this week. When heavy rains come, that means my staff all hands on deck out into the roads to fix washouts, et cetera. So we've been dealing with that over the last couple of weeks. We did the trenching and electrical, for the electrical at the parks today, so we're working on that. Spectrum was also running the parks to do static IVs and then once the powers are made, we can connect all of that. So progress is being a, on that project. It's a pretty big project for getting all the tools, et cetera. And then the soil maintenance RFP, it seems like a night of RFPs, I have those. That closed yesterday. The committee will meet September thirty, or at least September thirty, because that's when I'll be back and I do want to sit on that committee. And also, it's just for next year, soil maintenance program for the next six, four years, so we have time. And then the heat trailer is making the rounds. So it was at Oakdale, it's down on Richmond. It'll be at Blossom next. These people like to go there. And then we have a couple of other requests coming in about that. So that's what, oh, thank you.
Thank you very much for your work. Spectrum may be like, you know, September and October.
And then they say, make sure you're there this morning at eight AM. We're glad this is there. We're going to be there. Eight forty-five is coming. We're still live here.
Where's the ending from you?
From, now, as we work on the breakfast and the agendas, as you guys picture the days on our ports completed, they're going to move to the state's car school in North Central. Happened out Thursday before. So once I have a meeting, that's later, whatever, we'll just send it in just like.
Alright, and you're looking better and better as it goes, so it's good. Councilor Ramos, and then we, Ray, outside, you have anything else?
No, I don't.
Alright. Anything else? Good, good, they work, Council? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Seeing none, we are adjourned.